Free Town Lakefield Regional School Committee to order. Can we have the roll, please?
Yes. David Goodsell.
Here.
Robert Clark. David Davenport.
Here.
Carolyn Bowman.
Here.
Derek Bracha.
Yes.
Robert Noguera.
Yes.
John Oliveri.
Here.
Sandra Souza.
Here.
Student Representative, David Rogers. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone recording the meeting here this evening? Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Alan Russell, Lakeville Cam.
Thank you, thank you both for attending. It's a pleasure to have you. Everyone, please rise and join me in the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. We're very happy to have everyone, a nice full room. Everyone's here for all the business of the evening, I'm sure, right? No one's gonna try and escape before the end of the meeting. No, just kidding. That being said, I think that it would be appropriate to take some items out of order and progress without objection, please, to the item number five, the recognitions, which will be the recognitions of our Pontiac sports teams, specifically the boys and girls soccer teams and the field hockey team. So I would like to turn it over now to our athletic director.
I want to thank Principal Petora and Dr. Heizeng for inviting us here because we had a very exciting fall at Pontiac. And not because of the wins and losses, there was lots of wins and that was great, but it was because of the number of students we had participating, over 300 athletes participated in the athletic program this fall. And not only participating, but focused and working hard, everything we want as educators. These young people went out there and worked extremely hard and it just happened, it was one of those golden falls, when it paid off with three conference champions and the teams that weren't conference champions just did a tremendous job on the playing fields and in the court there with volleyball, mostly because of how focused and how hard they worked to accomplish something. And that's what we really want to focus on, is what they can accomplish in terms of being in practice every single day, working hard, and the participation. I cannot tell you, within our 19 conference, having over 300 two falls in a row and having 22 freshman field hockey players, when there's only one other field hockey program in our conference that even has freshmen, it's a tremendous tribute to our community and how vibrant they are in getting these kids, getting our kids involved with multi-activities, all different activities. These are our best and brightest, they're students, they're athletes, they're just wonderful young people. The first group we want to acknowledge is our boys soccer team, and we'd like them to come up, and they are coached by Trevor Gattner. Some of our student athletes could not make it tonight, some of them are studying, they're working, involved in other sports, but we tried to get, I'm very pleased with the new piece of students who did get back here at seven o'clock tonight, so they're yours, whatever you have to do there.
Oh, okay. Well, certainly, on behalf of the Free Town Lakefield School Committee, we'd like to congratulate you on your achievement, you know, no small feat, and certainly, you know, do appreciate you coming here this evening so that we might be able to publicly acknowledge your achievements. And so I would like to play close first and congratulate you. Thank you very, very much. Very good to see you, congratulations.
And the boys soccer team were co-champions of the South Coast Conference this year. Thank you so much.
Congratulations again.
Outstanding, thank you.
Thank you very, very much, guys. Congratulations again.
Our next conference champion, first time in the history of the school, we've had a soccer champion in the girls' program. And Coach Ireland and Coach Bindon have done a tremendous job over the last three, four, five years, and the community's done a great job with the feeder program, to the point that these ladies, they were really fun to watch, how hard they worked and the sportsmanship they displayed, so our champions of the South Coast Conference, the girls' soccer team.
Congratulations, fellow students. On behalf of the Free Town Lakefield School Committee, we'd like to congratulate you on your outstanding achievement and all your hard work and dedication that went into this season. Really wonderful to watch, certainly fantastic to keep track of, and we were all very, very proud of you, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Fantastic job.
Thank you very much. And our next recognition is our field hockey team, our head coach, Cindy Cutherson, is, well, the head coach, and this was another monumental season, they'd won the conference before, but they had that magical season where they went right down to the South Final and they won the South Final, and they went up against Watertown for the Eastern Championship in the state, and they just did an outstanding job. This is another group of young ladies, that if you appreciate high school sports, to watch them work as hard as they did, as all the kids did, it was a treat, even if you don't understand what field hockey is, because they blow a whistle and the ball goes the other way, but they did an outstanding job, so we'd like to recognize Cindy Cutherson and the field hockey program.
Look at that, hold that up so you can see it, all right, yeah. Congratulations, on behalf of the Free Town Lakefield School Committee, I'd like to congratulate you on your awesome achievement, we were following you all very, very closely, a lot of hard work and dedication went into it, and congratulations to all of you, thank you so much for coming this evening. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I actually was going to invite you and the other coaches too, yes. Yeah, thank Mr. Calusio for just being an awesome A.D. We have a lot of unique needs during the season, and he's always out there and making sure that, you know, we have what we need, and the kids do work very hard, they're a bunch of overachievers. They taught me a lot about goal-setting this year, and I'm really proud of them, and I know, whatever endeavors they decide to do later on in life, I know these young ladies are gonna be successful because they put their mind to something and that was it, they worked so hard and overachieved, and it's an extension of the classroom, they all do really well in school and they overachieve on the field, so.
I was gonna invite you up together, but if I could have the soccer coaches up, please?
Come on over here, come on, get in front of the chair. I just, you know, put you on the spot, I just wanted to offer you the opportunity to say something about your season.
Sure. We went undefeated, which was, again, first time ever, 14-0-2, with 11 shutouts on the season, and, you know, so as Mr. Bushell said, the winning is just a small part of it, it was a great bunch of girls who worked extremely hard, there were every practice, they worked hard every single practice, and they were a pleasure to coach and they were a lot of fun to watch play, so it's an outstanding bunch of girls.
Wonderful, thank you, congratulations.
Boys program, a very special program, very special team, the team consisted of seniors, juniors, sophomores, and freshmen, and I believe that to be successful, you need to have a great, great town, Free Town Lakeville-a-Sona, to help with the feeder system, and this group's been together for a long, long time, I just had the lucky opportunity to coach these kids, these kids are great, on and off, the field, in the classroom, so I appreciate everything that they've done and the parents as well, thank you so much.
Congratulations.
On a closing note, Southeastern Mass doesn't get much respect from the North too often, and the fact that our field hockey coach, Cindy Cutherson, was named Coach of the Year in the Boston Globe, which is a very rare thing for us down in Southeastern Mass, it's also a tremendous honor that brought, the people wanted to know how to spell Pontiac, so.
As he said, we hardly ever get recognition through Boston, so Jenna O'Leary made the Boston Globe, and Carol Storms and Jenna also made the Boston Herald.
And once again, thank you for having us, and if you want to spend a great two hours, please come to an athletic event during the winter or spring, we'd love to have you to come and see the energy that's out there with our kids, because if you enjoy watching something, it's not gonna cost you, we don't have luxury seats or luxury boxes, but you're welcome to come and watch a game, we'd love to have you.
All right, thank you very much. Again, thank you all for coming, we know that your schedules are very, very busy, it was our honor to have you, congratulations again, and at this point, I'd like to call a short recess so that the entire committee can come up and congratulate you all, so thank you, and congratulations.
Some other important recognitions to make this evening.
Congratulations.
The Free Town Lakefield Middle School Perfect M-CAS Score students, Dr. Heizeng.
All right, good evening, everyone, I want to introduce Mr. Ralph Olson, he's our interim middle school principal, and he's gonna say a few words about some of our students who scored perfect on either their ELA or mathematics or science.
Science for the sixth grade last year, and they're the students that are attending school right now, so the people that really deserve to get recognized, Dave, that were with you last year, so I'm not quite taking credit, but I've had an opportunity to congratulate the teachers already too, just an awesome job for supporting these students, and I've had an opportunity also to talk to many of the parents that are out there, I've had fathers, mothers, and grandmothers that have taken credit for their perfect scores. What we'd like to do is call, we have 14 students altogether, and it really is quite an achievement on an M-CAS exam to get a 280, that's an absolute perfect score, whether it's math, science, or English. A lot of focus, a lot of taking it very seriously, the knowledge that they've obtained already and truly applying it is a measure of their achievement, so congratulations to all of you. I'm gonna read your names off, I'd like you to come up here and maybe stay up here as we give each one of the students a certificate, and Dr. Heizeng will present it to you, okay? We're gonna do this alphabetically, Devon Ahern. I gotta elaborate on each one of these, Devon is for mathematics, and I'd like to also acknowledge too that our sixth graders are actually from Grace, so kudos to Grace also from last year. Gavin Baril, and his first job. Sarah Blair, and Sarah is in science. Rebecca Dewicki, and hers is ELA-M-CAS. This one is kind of extraordinary, because not only was he perfect in math, but he was imperfect in English too, amazing having two perfect scores in M-CAS out of our 800 students altogether. Marcus Philippe. Perfect in mathematics, Autumn Hines. Andrew Johnson, perfect score in math-M-CAS. Leanne Kendall, perfect score in math-M-CAS. Jacob Cumberland, perfect score in math. Brayden Massa, perfect score in math-M-CAS. Anna Sunderland, perfect score in math. Jasper Tan, perfect score in ELA-M-CAS. Jacob Thompson, perfect score in math. And our final person of the 14, Anna Cartulus, perfect score in science-M-CAS. Again, it's quite an individual accomplishment for all of these students, keep the momentum rolling, the scholarships await, and either high school or whatever high school that you want to attend, keep it going, good job.
Whatever high school, a Pontiac high school, what the heck is that? Right? Oh, my God.
On behalf of the Free Town Lakefield School Committee, I'd like to congratulate you all for your achievements, and it is our honor to be able to have you here to recognize your hard work, and congratulations, congratulations.
Congratulations, 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 good work, guys.
They'll be back for the top 10.
That's right, that's right, we'll have them all back.
And we have.
One more recognition to make, C.B.
I didn't get my shout-out.
Maddie Dees, who I think tried to escape this at one point by not having a retirement party, but a lot allowing for that, about to go, we want to take the opportunity to give you a small token of our esteem and congratulate you on your retirement, and wish you well in everything that you're well-deserving, and great relaxations.
I just wanted to name you, so I'm not really scary.
You're kicking me, right? Yeah.
Thank you.
You guys find your time.
Very, very much, and they are, you're not supposed to shake it.
You folks are pretty predictable.
Thank you, thank you, it was a wonderful career I had at Free Town Elementary too, and I'm fortunate to have had the, what I feel, the best years in teaching, because you could be creative and everything else you wanted to be, and times are changing, as Bob Dylan said, the job's starting to be difficult, it's a hard job now, with the children and all the changes in the state and the class sizes, and I ask you to recognize your teachers on a daily basis, because they're the ones in the trenches, and as much as I appreciate this, every day, congratulate them for a job well done. Thanks.
Thank you so much.
David, David, I'm gonna have to call the PIN Conference also.
Okay, why don't you go ahead and do that now, we're gonna call the, I'll turn the meeting to Mr. Davenport, so that he can call this Free Town Lakefield Regional School Finance Committee to order.
Okay, I'd like to call the Regional Finance Committee to order so they can participate in the upcoming discussion on budget. Could you call the roll?
Scott Bellgas.
Yeah.
David Davenport.
Here.
And Derek calls.
Derek Bracha.
I know we're spread out. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Community Speaks, it's that portion of our meeting where we invite members of the community to address the school committee, the things that might not ordinarily appear as agenda items, but are under the purview of the school committee. Is there anyone who would like to address the school committee this evening? Yes, sir.
John Potting, Lakeville resident, tonight's probably an appropriate night for someone to speak about M-CAS and also about sports. When we talk about school cuts, which we talked about earlier tonight, talk about cutting the schools, sports, I think certainly the enthusiasm that we see here tonight with the athletes, coaches, the athletic director, and certainly to say that they are good students would be saying the least, I mean, most of them are good students, so to even have that on the table to me is something that should not be on the table. How you pay for it, through fees or whatever, that can be looked at, but to even talk about dropping sports, I believe is not the right thing. And obviously, to talk about M-CAS, there was a newspaper article when Middleboro was at last week, written by the Bunkton's honor, Mark Belanger, where he did an analysis between, first of all, Plymouth, Middleboro, and Free Town Lakeville, so the numbers are done, I'll assume they are correct, and certainly Lakeville came out very, very well on top of those, and certainly tonight giving up the draw probably reinforces that, but just a couple of scores, students scoring advanced or proficient grades, 10, because they were trying to pick a school to go on to a higher level of 11th or 12th grade. Free Town Lakeville was 97% in English Language Arts, 87% in math, and 89% in science, well ahead of Middleboro. The SAT scores had similar grades, and there are other things that they rated, but those are some of the highlights, and the other one was attending college, Free Town Lakeville had an 82% attending college number, given in the newspaper, once again, far and above other two school systems that are close by. My only point is that the net school spending number, hopefully this will be the last time I need to speak about net school spending, as the public speaks, is Middleboro was used as one of the school systems that spent 106.2% in net school spending, and we all remember our numbers of 101.4. Keeping in mind that the taxpayers in Lakeville pay the bulk of that versus Middleboro, that is, we pay 63%, the state subsidizes Middleboro more than we do, but really what happens is, the comparison given as school system that did 106%, we certainly blew those numbers away, which tells you a lot of good things about good students, parents, teachers, et cetera, so it's a very, very positive thing. Last thing is, school choice, there was supposed to be a committee that was formed and started in October, I'd just like an update later on sometime then, it's now December. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else for Community Speaks? Okay, thank you very much. All right, moving on to the acceptance of minutes, I want to entertain a motion to accept the minutes, September 5th. Second. Motion is second, any discussions of motion? There are none, move to a vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those who are opposed? And there is an extension. Okay, I want to entertain a motion to accept the minutes dated November 7, 2012, so move. All right, the motions are second. Motion is second, it's a discussion. There are none, move to a vote, all those in favor of accepting the minutes, November 7, 2012, and signify by saying aye. All those who are opposed? We have an extension. Okay, very good, okay, I had a request to take another item out of order, without objection, we would move to the principals' reports, please.
We have Mr. Olson, who's going to give his update on middle school and some areas of M-CAS and other updates.
The presentation from the middle school was primarily directed toward our improvement plan, and I'll allude to a couple of the other kinds of activities and things that we do. On the improvement plan, one of the things that we said that we were focusing on is the improvement of learning and instruction in particular. What I provided for you in a middle folder packet over there is some of the information that we've provided to teachers this year, on information to help with learning as far as the students. We have this particular paper, the first one that's there, it's known as a data dashboard. On the data dashboard, it's a very convenient Excel sheet that we provide our teachers, particularly at the beginning of the year, if you look at it, obviously there are no names on it, the names were alphabetized, and it indicated the services possibly that the students were getting, it also reflects their attendance from last year. Very easy for the teacher to run their finger right across there for any student and get a good snapshot as to where possibly some of the strengths and weaknesses are, and am I dealing with an overachiever and underachiever. The other information that's down here, in addition to the attendance, is the most recent M-CAS test that the students have had, the last two, so it gives you an indication of what the student is capable of, particularly if they apply themselves seriously to the M-CAS exam. If you run your finger all the way over across, you'll see four grades from the core areas, English, Math, Science, and Social Studies, so again, it's a great gauge for the teachers to look at, to get a snapshot of the students before things even get started. Do they have that momentum and are they working toward it? We provided another set of sheets just after the first marking term, so that they could actually look back and see how are things progressing compared to what they had initially, so again, they get another data dashboard, and again, the intent is to help the teachers actually provide the best possible learning experience for the students at the same time. Some of the other information that we provided for the teachers was the M-CAS analysis, you've seen some of the general stuff that we should have provided earlier at one of the meetings, we have a more detailed representation of how each one of the students performed. It's a little bit of a grind, but we assembled books for each one of our teachers so that they have their students and how they performed in their particular content area. If it wasn't in their content area, then the guidance counselors have them available, so it's a booklet that's really. of the students before things even get started. Do they have that momentum, and are they working toward it? We provided another set of sheets just after the first marking term, so that they could actually look back and see how are things progressing compared to what they had initially. So again, they get another data dashboard, and again, the intent is to help the teachers actually provide the best possible learning experience for the students at the same time. Some of the other information that we provided for the teachers was the M-CAS analysis. You've seen some of the general stuff that we should provide earlier at one of the meetings. We have a more detailed representation of how each one of the students performed. It's a little bit of a grind, but we assembled books for each one of our teachers so that they have their students and how they performed in their particular content area. If it wasn't in their content area, then the guidance counselors have them available. So it's a booklet that's really easy to open up, real easy to look at. Students that have specific services like five-on-fours and IEPs, we provide a booklet for all of those teachers to be able to look at, too. So they're assessing what the strengths and weaknesses of each one of the students that are there. In essence, it helps them to plan lessons, individual interventions that they might be having with the students. It's all good information. If anything, I think that possibly they have not been used to so much data, so, you know, the bizarre individual who has come in this year is kind of immersed in data, and I put a lot on their table, but many of them have risen to the occasion, they've looked it over, and they've used it as meaningful information. In the 7th grade, which a lot of our English teachers in the 7th grade right now are doing, they're preparing the students for the long composition. That's the year in which they administer the long comp. We have access to the students who took the test last year. We have generated a good sample, a healthy sample of the students, and how they performed and how they were corrected. So the teachers have had an opportunity to look at our students, not just simply a boilerplate. This is how open response and long compositions are corrected. So they've had that at their disposal as well. The other piece that we looked at, and I will go back one second to the data dashboards, the data can be disaggregated so that we can show it by team, so teams can look at only their students. We can disaggregate the data by students that are getting special services. So it's a nice, compact version where they don't have to look at every single kid in the school when they look through the information that we've provided for them. The other piece that I mentioned to you earlier, and it is somewhat problematic at the school, are grade distributions. At the very beginning of the year, one of the reasons why the data dashboards were presented was so that the teachers could get a good idea as to how we're grading and how that student responded on an M-CAS exam. In essence, if the kid took the exam seriously, there should be some direct correlations between their performances and how they actually scored in many of the content areas that you have there. My intent was to have the students, and I did it in a very easy benign way, but I was attempting to call to their attention, it does appear as if we have a number of very, very high grades. I've provided you this information. This all goes to the teachers as well. They have their own grade distributions from the end of last year, they have their first term grade distributions. Quite frankly, a number of teachers did get the message, and I believe that the rigor has amped up. There are other areas that I think we still need to work on, and a lot of that's on me because I did not call it to their attention emphatically enough that an A is excellent work, a B is very good work, a C is average work. That's what's described in the student handbook. That should be the focus of our grading, and if we're truly providing rigorous material to the kids and challenging them, that's the way it should turn out. I've given you also the same data that I provided the teachers. You will see the distribution both from last year, the end-of-year data, and you'll see the ability to correlate the totals on the numbers of percentages of students that fell into the advanced, proficient, needs to improve, and so forth. There should be a correlation if you look at that sheet. There is a great disparity. The percentage of students that scored in the advanced is much lower on M-CAS than it is on the number of students that got A's, quite frankly. Again, I'm not looking for a normal curve. I'm looking for challenges within the content area itself. Many people have been responsive to that already. They need to hear a little bit more of it, and there will be discussion of it in upcoming faculty meetings. They will get the data, you're now seeing it, too. If rigor does pick up and it results in somewhat of a lower end of the grade as a result of that, there will be pushback. That's to be assumed, whether it's parental or whatever. That's why I gave the information of PTO, and I would give it to you, too. It does need to pick up, and if there's pushback about it, they have to realize. I've already told the teachers, I am on board in terms of defending any position you have as long as it's stated in your mode of assessment, that your rubrics or whatever you're using are of that particular level, it's fair, the kids understand it, and the demands are there. But if it does start to lower, I'm expecting that there will be a little bit of pushback on it. So we're looking for more consistency and possibly a little more rigor. So if you look at the, it does vary from grade to grade, team to team, content area to content area. The one that's obvious right off, that is, math seems to be the most demanding of all the content areas as far as grading. I think we need all to get closer to the same page. Not looking for a normal curve, but closer to the same page. One of the areas also on the improvement plan that was on the district plan is communication to the community and to parents. A lot of teachers are very anxious about getting going on the parent portal. They're very supportive of that. Many teachers have come forth and even have said during our goal sessions that they would love to disclose their entire rank books on a voluntary basis. They don't have to do that, but many of them are definitely up through that. The other piece that we did prior to the portal opening up is that we went with a one-page progress report the last time out. Redica has the component to be able to really personalize progress reports. So some of you may have seen, if you have sons and daughters that are at the middle school, there were personalized narratives rather than just the canned comments and the grades that go there. Some teachers did take the extra step to do that. One of the other things that we're doing in the classroom, and again, to get an assessment of to where we are and give the other educators an opportunity to walk into classrooms, you have another document that's in your sheet that says walkthroughs. This is a non-evaluative instrument, but if you look at it, it has a number of best practices that are in it, things to look for. We've had curriculum leaders, we've had teachers that have volunteered to do this, the faculty knew that they were coming in. Four- to six-minute walkthroughs, simply make a checkoff on what they're seeing. It's good for them to be able to see different lessons that are being presented, what's happening outside of the isolation of their own classroom, and it's also a good idea to be able to present that data. We've had, I believe it was 54 walkthroughs altogether that have been conducted already, and that information was displayed to the whole faculty so that they see it. There are indicators there that show the types of teaching that are going on and the kinds of vehicles that they're using. So it's very informative and it's good for the teachers. There's a faculty meeting that's coming up, and there are some issues. I'm not coming on board as an interim principal to say things need to be tipped upside down. There are contractual agreements that are in place and a number of other things. However, my suggestion to the school is that we develop a task force of representative teachers across the board so it represents the population. We need to look at some things that appear to have gone in separate directions. I brought up to you earlier, we operate on three schedules. I'm not going to give you the pluses and minuses of that, and you have already agreed contractually to those three separate schedules. It needs to be examined. In order for a school to move in a positive direction, make maximum utilization of your staff, you do have to have people moving in the same direction with a commonality as far as the schedule is concerned. The grading needs to be looked at so that people understand, have some sort of consistent continuity. And the use of team time. I'm not contradicting people at this particular point, but we have a variation from one team to another, what teams are designated as what their kid's gonna do. Some of them use it as a time to regroup, get their homework together, others use it for silent reading, others use it for other things. Again, it lacks consensus or continuity across the board, and parents can literally say, "Why is my kid doing that? I want my kid doing something else." People need to get on the same page, and all it takes is a consensus, not everybody doing their own thing. That will be presented to the teachers. It's been 10 years since the school has had a teacher handbook. You need some sort of clarity of expectations that's in concert with your contract and everything, but the teachers need to have some sort of guidelines like that to get people on the same page. Some other things that we're working on, I would thank the Central Office Administration for bringing Atlas Rubicon here. It is an amazing tool that we're on the beginning stages of, but to document your curriculum, have your learning outcomes connected with standards, and have those activities available for all your teachers in the building. It's an amazing collaborative device, and it's also an amazing tool. Future teachers, once you get it together, let's just fine-tune it a little bit every single year. It's an amazing instrument for instruction. You have new teachers that come into the building, you are handing them the motherlode, basically, on instruction for particular courses, and it will give you continuity. That's what the DES revision is gonna be looking for. The, we are also looking, I presented to the PTO, unfortunately, we didn't have a large turnout and cable bit, but there is a, there are softwares that are out there for providing common assessment analysis. A lot of that's happening in the new evaluation process that we're doing. Many of the teachers want to now do pre-tests and post-tests. On the pre-test, it's to gauge whether or not students need to be instructed to certain things. Maybe we can move along a lot quicker than what we are right now. All this is gonna be happening, but I can't have teachers sitting there doing their own tallies on questions and things like that. They need to jump into the future like the Rubicon by using something like a master manager software. It will correct, and it will analyze, and it will track student progress, so that's given consideration, too. The evaluation process looks, it's daunting, and quite frankly, for us, we're thinking about, my God, how are we gonna fit it all in during the time? And it's intimidating to some teachers, particularly when they say, "We're being thrown all of these new curveballs at us at the same time, too." But I think it's all good because it really emphasizes what the best practices are in education. On the light side of what we're doing at the middle school, we have some really neat co-curricular activities that are happening at the school right now. Believe it or not, you have a state champion at the middle school. There's a trivia question. Anybody know what the state championship is at Free Town Lakeville Middle School right now? We are a state champion middle school in Rubric's Cube. I have never seen anything like it. It has taken on big time in that building. Nathan Huliterio and his kids have developed a formula. They went in and competed against schools throughout the state, and they blew them away. Come into the schools around lunchtime, sometimes see the kids in action. It's unbelievable. Girls' and boys' basketball are getting into it right now. We're competitive, we're fast, we're not large, but we're playing hard games. Yesterday, I couldn't believe it, the bleachers in the gym was absolutely packed, lots of good enthusiasm. We have a spelling team that's going out there and competing against other masses of soy at middle schools. We have 10 kids that participate in an art club. We have a club that's called Techno Ninjas, believe it or not. That's a draw in hand to get kids in for movie making. Again, Mr. Huliterio, Mr. Robert, run this club. There are over 60 kids. They have put together their first movie, it's in the can, and they're gonna be showing it to the building at large in about a week or so, so they'll all get a chance to see it. There's a holiday concert that's coming up. If you have nothing on your schedule, or you really wanna go to support the music program, December 18th. We also have a musical production, Music Man, that's coming up, too. On the walkthroughs and on some of the collaborative activities that we have occurring during our co-planning time, there's some neat stuff that's happening. In the 8th grade, the AUMDA people are working on a unit on the Holocaust, taking of everything from propaganda to perceptions. Lot of nice critical thought. In the 7th grade, um, you wanna say what you're doing?
Sure.
Ms. Solomon?
Yeah.
What's happening?
We're doing a unit on the life of Charles Dickens, who is studying his life and his work of Christmas Carol, studying as a historical classic, all the issues of benevolence and kindness and world issues, and the kids are making fabulous connections with what happened in the story in 1843 to what's happening in our society now. We're connecting that to something that the September 8th portion has the English class and the reading class, we're connecting that. The reading class, they're working with Mary Shelley's Frankenstein and determining who's the real monster in the story. They're just making wonderful, real-life connections, understanding elements of literature that we're able to work with in the writing portion in my class and in the reading portion in the, uh...
The key point again there is the critical thought that's coming out of all of these exercises, and the business of who is the villain? It's not Boris Karloff, and they're not using his name, but that's obviously what they're discussing. And the last thing, kind of a neat thing that's happening in grade 6 is that we're having a collaborative effort between Paul Corsi, our technology teacher that you hired at the beginning of the year as an extra, and Ms. Hopper, the Spanish teacher. Paul has actually helped her assemble a multimedia presentation that's gonna allow students to display their skills that they've obtained in comparing the French and Spanish culture. Lot of analysis. Paul has helped her with animation, graphics, and music, which will be incorporated into the PowerPoint. So, some neat stuff. Again, I hope that I haven't skewed it toward the critical side at the very beginning. There's a lot of very, very good stuff that's going on in that building, and I'm very proud of what I'm seeing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stolz. Are there any questions from Stolz? Mr. Oliver?
Just one, kind of back to the beginning part of your report, and it was an excellent report. Just to clarify, to make sure I'm understanding correctly, when you talk about improving the rigor, sorry, with what the students are being taught and how the grades are matching up to the M-CAS scores, am I correct to assume then that we may be grading our students too easily at the middle school, and that's the pushback you're gonna get?
In some instances, we are, yeah.
Parents and what, not saying, "Why is my kid getting an A anymore?" When it should be realistically...
In all honesty, when I'm looking at individual distributions, I had a couple of classes in core content areas where every given class had an A. This is not a perfect world.
Well, I would encourage you to fight that pushback and just keep going forward. That's only gonna help our...
We're going with it.
Help our students.
Okay? And don't get me wrong, I think those people are really and truly listening. We had that discussion, and it was a case of, are you, are you insulating them? Again, sometimes at the middle school level, we think more of the whole child, and there's some wonderful, wonderful people that don't like to put it straight with certain kids, and I think some of them are now starting to see, you gotta approach it a little differently because you're not, you're not doing them any favors.
No, I agree. There's a happy meeting, though, would be my guess.
Yes, there is. Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else, Ms. Stolz? All right, thank you very much for that. Mr. Whitfield?
Yes.
Before we continue, I wasn't quick enough when you suggested the change in agenda.
Okay.
You were pretty quick, and I should've been quick also. I brought the FinCon to discuss budget, and we put it first, and these reports are important, and I didn't join this really soon, so...
I get what you're getting at.
Would it be possible to do budget discussion and then immediately move to Dave's report?
Sure. We accomplish what we hope to, yes. Okay. All right, yes, absolutely. Thank you. All right, so we'll suspend the principal report for a moment and move to old business, item A, FY14 Joint Finance and School Committee Discussion, so...
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a follow-up comment to Mr. Pottley's comments from Community Speaks? And...
Yes, please.
It's just two quick points. You know, the formula for chapter 70 funding, in terms of the amount that the state subsidized each town, is determined in a combination of property value and income levels. So I just, I wonder whether or not the comparison of Middleborough to Free Town and Lakeville is an accurate one, because it would make sense that they would be subsidized more based on the way that chapter 70 formulas are. I just wanna make sure that that's clear to the public. And the second point, I think that the argument stating that we're doing so well with the limited funding that we have, yay us, so we shouldn't get any more, is a faulty argument. And I just wanna make sure that that's, you know, that is made clear to the public as well, because yes, we're working very, very hard on limited resources, but again, that's eliminating us to what our potential could be if we were being adequately funded. So I just think it's important from the school side, the public here, that...
All right. Thank you for your comments. Okay, back to our FY14 Joint Finance and School Committee Discussion. Davenport, would you like to start?
Sure. This is sort of a carryover from our last meeting. Had a scheduling problem in that we really weren't able to bring the FinCon in... item A, FY14, joint finance and school committee discussion, so...
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a follow-up comment to Mr. Fodderley's comments from the community space? And...
Yes, please.
It's just two quick points. You know, the formula for chapter 70 funding, in terms of the amount that the state subsidizes each town, is determined in a combination of property value and income levels. So I just, I wonder whether or not the comparison of Millboro to Freetown and Lakeville is an accurate one, because it would make sense that they would be subsidized more based on the way that chapter 70 formulas are. I just want to make sure that that's clear to the public. And the second point, I think that the argument stating that we're doing so well with the limited funding that we have, yay us, so we shouldn't get any more, is a faulty argument. And I just want to make sure that that's, you know, that is made clear to the public as well, because yes, we're working very, very hard on limited resources. But again, that's eliminating us to what our potential could be if we were being adequately funded. So I just think it's important from the school side, the public here, that.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Okay, back to our FY14 joint finance committee school committee discussion. Dabber, would you like to start?
Sure. This is sort of a carryover from our last meeting. Had a scheduling problem in that we really weren't able to bring the FinCon in, so we can tonight. Certainly not going to redo that presentation again and take up all that time, but we did present a number of potential cuts that could happen. A mid-range where there would be some cuts, some town participation, which, AKA override, or what it would be in terms of all override. I'm going to ask for some help from Mike and Jessica also, because I know they're continuing to do more budget work. They're partway through working from the ground up on a zero-based budget. I'd like to get, you know, some sense of an update on that and timeline. And there's also been, there was a joint meeting between Lakeville and Freetown that got in the papers and said certain things about the towns' outlook, and perhaps we might want to go over all of those things tonight. I don't, I mean, I don't have a set plan for tonight on what to discuss, but those are the big areas that we could get into.
All right. Maybe what we can do is then start with where we are in our budget development process today.
So, just to give an overview to the community, we had a voted budget last year of a little bit over $33 million. And we also know that $50,000 was prepaid for special education services with end-of-year funds from last year, which actually means that our operating budget is far above that $33 million piece. So at the summertime, when we saw our revenues increase, we did add back some staffing, which again took our operational budget, in reality, above that voted $33 million budget. Looking forward to FY14, and this is just simply a recap of discussions that we've had for anyone new in the audience, looking at projections for FY14 with the funding that we have in grants, that we have staffing funded in, with those end-of-year funds that are bringing us above our budgeted number, and then the added staff that we put in place this summer, we projected that we would need around $34, 2.7 to $35 million in FY14 for a level service budget, okay, which created a shortfall, we estimated anywhere between $1.7 to $2 million. And that was the discussions that we've had with the FinCon and with the community and with the towns. So what we've done in the last couple of months is we put together an ABC cut scenario. And those cuts included the closing of school, they included the elimination of athletics, the elimination of specials at the elementary schools, and going to half-days. There was a variety of things that we put out to the community as possible cuts to close that $1.7 to $2 million gap. One of it was the, one of the scenarios was the school department including the entire $1.7 to $2 million. The towns and the schools kind of going with a half and half cut and a half override. And then, you know, the other one was, you know, us, we had full override, and then all of that. So we began, after the last budget meeting, we went to the leadership team, we had a full day leadership retreat, and we began building a true zero-based budget. And what I mean by that is we literally started from zero, particularly with staffing. Now, in the past, what's happened is we've taken our contractual obligations, which makes up between 80 and 85% of our budget, and we built up from there. And that's not really a truly zero-based process. The zero-based process is really foregoing all of previous practices, all previous programs, and starting from zero. So I asked, beginning with special education, because we are legally obligated to cover special education services, I asked the principals and the administrative team, assistant principals, coordinators, to begin building their staff from the ground. And where we have gotten to at this particular point, because we've only had one day together, we have another day scheduled on the 10th, is we have stopped, and my community exact figure, at around $30 million. But where that takes us is class sizes at this point of over 30, from kindergarten all the way through eighth grade. In some cases, we have class sizes of around 40. And so what we're going to be going back on Monday and doing is, that's the bare bones. That is as limiting of an educational program that we would run or could run without it becoming an unwornable environment, if you would say. If we increased class sizes anymore, there honestly wouldn't be any point of these children going to school, because there would be 35 to 40, even above 40, students in a classroom. So we made the limit that we do not have class sizes over 35. And I'm talking about core classes. I'm talking about first grade, second grade, third grade, with excessive class sizes, specials with excessively large class sizes, some cases 40 to 50. And so we stopped at that particular point. The next step that we're going to do is begin building back into the budget based on certain goals, objectives, and priorities. And so we have tiered those for the administrative team based on our discussions at the first day retreat. So we listed out what our district goals were, we listed out what our priorities were, and we discussed those. We're going to put those positions in tiers and begin building them back in. My hope is, is to come to you with a very, very efficient budget. But I'm going to say this now, you're not going to be able to present a budget to the towns that will have us eat the entire deficit. It's impossible. And it's not educationally sound, and I can't in good conscience put that before these communities as acceptable. We are going to, you know, come to the table, and we're going to bring you the best possible educational program we can, as this fully responsible and mean as it can be. But we also need to be true to our goals, true to the vision that we have adopted and goals that have been accepted by this committee, and our budget will reflect that. And we will have a draft to the committee by our next meeting in January. I have a few moments left.
The next meeting, the last meeting we had was on the 19th, right before the holiday, thanks to the holiday. We, as Jessica mentioned, we were looking at those three case scenarios, and obviously speaking, we can't bank on any of them, so we have to pay one of those case scenarios. And in that case, you know, if you reject the concept of $1.72 million, reduce gravity, then what's really left is building something completely from scratch, from the ground up. And that is very different than the way that it's been done around here for a very long time. We were looking at the basic concept of, in order to base basic services that we need to provide students. However, we also were looking at, from your point of view, this could be an opportunity, and that you function differently. You cannot function the same. You cannot function differently if your structures are the same. So the whole idea was to make the structures different. With that said, I know the leadership team, when we started to look at, these are the basic services, and it looks different than it has before, then what supports can we build in? Because we are going to have issues where kids need supports. That's the next piece that's being built in, at least as my understanding. The next thing that we have to do is leverage as best as possible what our strength would be. And tonight, once I get Mr. Fodder to make a few more signatures for us, we'll be able to access the $903,000 to actually begin to install the technology that we've talked about over this holiday weekend. We have to look in a way of providing instruction differently. So the whole structure has to look different. We never discussed anything about closing buildings, we never discussed anything about getting rid of athletics or extracurricular, we never even discussed that. Roundup is what we talked about, and right now, that's where we're at. I'd also like to remind the committee, and this is FY14, obviously, the budget number is going to look different because, remember, this year, you, just in debt service, you were at $3.5 million. Two million's coming out of, $1.4 thereabouts is coming out of the towns. Well, that's all gone. Revenue is gone, which is fine. But at the same time, too, you're going to have the debt portion between the two towns, approximately of $700,000 for the two builders, much less you still have intermediate schools to deal with. So that's going to be a much smaller number. And then the piece that we're going to tack on top of that, once we get going, obviously, is the technology piece. So it's going to be very difficult at the beginning for you to recognize the number that you normally see, because 33.4 this year is going to be lower, but it's only because your debt has been low. All right? So it's going to be a little bit more different for you to see. You want to keep in mind, too, we got a message this past week from the finance at the Department of Elementary and Second Area, we will be getting a letter from the chairman, Mitchell Chester, stating that we felt below net school spending in FY12. Now, let's, just so you understand something, the towns collectively gave approximately $200,000, maybe a little bit more, over net school spending last year, correct? And we spent $500,000 below that so that we would have money for FY13. There you go. We spent below net school spending by approximately $200,000 to $300,000 last year. Now, they don't get that upset with you as long as you use those funds for FY13, which is what we have done. But I guess the point I'm trying to make is, when you get close to net school spending, it's like trying to get your income taxes to come in at zero. Think of it. If you don't spend enough, the state's not happy. You spend too much, you just went over budget. So I just want the committee to be aware of that. You also recognize 90 cuts came in this year, this week. Circuit break was reduced, we think will be okay there. Regional transportation was only reduced by a million across the state, we think will be okay, okay there. We will lose money from McKinney-Vento. It was cut by 55%, so that's approximately $31,000 to $32,000. And the REIT that we've been getting for years is no longer available to us, so that's another $42,000. I just want you to be aware of those other things that are going on around FY13 before you begin to discuss FY14. That's kind of what I want.
I think to my point, there's certain contingencies like these that happen during the year that you don't expect, that we're going to have to make concessions for within our budget. So, you know, this was a totally unexpected 9C cut, and...
The only time, I mean, I think everybody here, especially the folks that I know the select boys, they'll catch that little piece in the paper, and they talk about the state revenues are looking like in August and September, and they're just trying to get a sense of how accurate was that projection going forward. It is a surprise, but, you know, at the same time, too, we had one, I think it was two years ago, I want to say, and I think we went begging and pleaded back to the State House and say, please don't touch reasonable transportation, because we were in for a big hit now.
That's right.
And they did reinstitute it. So, you know, we try to keep our ears to the grindstone, so to speak, and listen to what's going on.
Could I ask you a quick question? Didn't they tie in any hit to regional transportation? They did.
We said the same thing.
Okay.
And I'm sitting, well, how can you, basically what you're saying, if you can't reduce regional transportation, unless you reduce chapter 70.
There you go.
They didn't do it, they did.
But it's only 1%-ish.
1%.
But I agree, because I remembered it in the back of my mind that that was the discussion.
Exactly, that was, you responded to that particular situation.
Yep.
Avoided it again.
Okay.
Mr. Grayson, you had a question?
I want to see if I understand this correctly. You, zero-based budgeting, so you've decided to forego budgeting any contractual expense at this point?
No, we're budgeting contractual expense, but we're starting from need. So we've taken our data, we've taken what we need to operate, and we have begun to build from there.
So as a fixed expense, the contractual obligations are in there?
If you hire a teacher to a particular amount, you contractually obligated to that teacher for that amount, yes. The matter of is how many of those do you hire?
Right.
With these, those obligations, yes.
Yeah, that's what I want to know. That's not the way I heard it, so I just want to make sure.
It is a completely different concept to say that you're building something up, because we all know, it's just been, okay, we'll cut this and cut this and work around the periphery, so to speak, and cut. We didn't look at it that way.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong. For the years that I've been here on this committee, we were told that we were going to zero-based budgeting two years ago. So are you telling me that that never happened?
I'm telling you, I don't think to the degree that we're doing it now. Mike?
Because in a true zero-based budget, you're building a budget based on need, so we're going to budget for the FTDs that we need to operate. We're not simply saying, we have these numbers of staff, and we're keeping all of those staff, and we're building from there.
Well, you have fixed expenses, no matter what you look at, the utilities in this building, you have to, you know, so this zero-based budget, you've got to put your fixed expenses in.
That's actually where we...
Part of those fixed expenses are your contractual obligations to the extent that you need them.
Exactly.
That's the way I understand it.
Right. And then the part that's a little bit amorphous from that either, too, is because obviously, you know, health is a fixed cost, but that's obviously equal to the amount of people that you have.
Right.
But you're right, when it comes to ensuring the buildings, when you're talking about transportation, when you're talking about, you know, umbrella liability with the school committee and things of that nature, you have to have that. There's no way around that.
Okay. Okay, so we have, your next meeting, the administrative's was the 10th?
Yes.
Okay. We can expect a report from that in January, you said?
Yes, you'll have a draft.
Do we have any other questions? Yes, Mr. Dabber.
I'd like to run through a couple of figures and just follow with me. We talk a lot about unfunded mandates and the impact that it has on us. Two years ago, we regionalized. Both towns voted to do that, and one of the primary goals was to lower elementary class sizes, right? So that's going to be one of your goals, to keep elementary class sizes low? So you're going to build back in for that?
We're going to build back in, yes. That's one of the priorities.
Okay. Where at this point, you said you had day one, and you were $30 million. Where at this point are elementary class sizes, roughly?
Oh, where are the elementary class sizes in our current budget?
In theory, in your current...
30.
They're 30, okay. All right, so at about 900 kids in elementary-ish, rough numbers, and 30 kids to a class, that's 30 teachers. Right? Yeah, that's easy enough. At 22 kids in a class and the same population, you are going to need 40 teachers. Okay, so how much do 10 teachers cost us, roughly?
You're in a situation where the teachers are not the, all the younger teachers, you've got some of the 40s, you've got some of the...
Oh, no, I understand. I'm just looking for a very, nobody, I won't hold you to it, and nobody else will, because nobody even knows what I'm saying, I don't think.
50 to 55? The reason I'm saying that is you could have some, you know, because at this point, you're talking about some of the younger teachers, but you're also starting to work with other tiered teachers.
Okay. Well, I would submit from our prior meeting that the towns, like it or not, supported or not, back in the days that was being discussed, both towns voted for regionalization. Both towns voted principally to regionalize, to lower class sizes at the elementary schools. That was one of the key drivers, as I remember it. There were a few other reasons. So we made a conscious decision in both towns to lower our class sizes, like I just described. The impact of that is approximately 10 extra teachers. That, if it's not supported, is an unfunded mandate of somewhere in the vicinity of what you just said, $500,000 to $550,000. It's additional cost. You're looking at a shortfall. We need to identify why the shortfall's happening, and we have to decide where to go from there. I mean, if this is what the towns wanted, and this is what we present to the towns, and then the towns don't want to pay for it, that's a problem. See where I'm going at? In terms of what, you know, if we need to come to the towns and justify an override, this is part of the equation. I'm not saying we're there yet, but, you know, there's lots of talk about, well, teachers got a 1% raise. Okay, 10 teachers getting a 1% raise on a $55,000 basis, how much money is that?
It's definitely a 1%. 1% is $55,000, $550,000 of the 10 you just talked about.
$550,000 is a lot larger number than $5,500. Saying that we need to look at what we did. You know, we did this to improve quality. I'll buy that argument. I don't have any problems with that argument. Now we're, you know, talking about, we're in this funding struggle, how to... How did we get here? We're there for a lot of reasons, but this is one of them. And if you're gonna come to the towns and ask for X amount in order to cover the barest, leanest, most efficient way that you can present to offer a quality education to our kids, I would argue that part of that argument is what the towns themselves voted for. Voted for low class sizes at our elementary schools. We've been bouncing around a target of about 22 kids or so in a class. It's been up a little, down a little. We've talked about even trying to take some sort of a vote or make some sort of a consensus on what that number should be, so we have something to go from year to year on. But this is what I was trying to say in a prior meeting, and I think it needs to be part of the debate. We purposefully increased our costs in our entire elementary operations to make gains of quality and other aspects of the education that we deliver to our kids. It has a cost. It might not be exactly $550,000, but it has a cost, correct? I mean, we could play with the numbers a little finer. That's part of what our need is. So when we boil it down to this final presentation, I mean, I'd like to come to the towns and say that we could do it for zero. I'd like to come to the towns and say that we can do it for as little as we can. But if we come to the towns and ask for something, I think we have to explain that we're asking for something that the towns asked us to do. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask, we hold your comments from public till the end of the meeting, and we have community recap. Yes?
First of all, just to extend, like, considering if someone possibly, Mr. Davenport or a friend or anyone, they could possibly elaborate or give me a different statement about the possible sports cuts. Because I know that a lot of the students, especially at the student council meetings, have brought that up, and they just, all they hear is sports cuts. And even though they might have explained that, like, it was definitely, it was just an option that they were exploring, that the community is exploring, all they hear is sports cuts. So I was wondering if you could give me a statement, or how far you're going on the option of sports cuts that I could give in terms that is fully...
Okay, we certainly do that. And Dr. Heiser was previously describing the, where they still need the budget development, so you...
Right, so at this point, the budget development, from where we're building from zero, that hasn't come into discussion yet as a means to close any gaps, because we're building from zero. So first of all, the difficulty in doing this is we don't know what our revenue is yet. And we're not gonna know where our revenue is even in April until January. And then we still have to have discussions with the towns in terms of, you know, where our revenue is coming in at compared to where our expenses are coming in at. So, but that hasn't even been discussed yet. It's not something that we have put out there front and center saying, "This is on the table." It has not. So those options were put out as kind of a final case scenario. If we still have this $2 million deficit and we're unable to close the gaps in any way, that was a menu of options that we put down, but it is not, it is not even coming into discussion.
Okay, like, Mr. Oliveri?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to question Sarah, because I was gonna ask Dr. Heiser, that $30 million number that you're at at this point, the process, and I know you said that sports hasn't come under, up to the discussion yet, and other items haven't. Is that incorporated into the 30, or are you saying that's over the 30? Or what is above the 30 that isn't included yet?
That's in the 30 right now.
That's in the 30 right now. What items aren't in that 30 right now? Is it just teachers?
Positions, FTE, staffing is not in there at this point.
At this point, no cuts to any programs or activities or anything? It's just a matter of the number of folks we have supporting the programs, activities, extracurriculars, et cetera?
They were all cuts in personnel.
Mr. Oliveri?
First of all, I wanna, you know, I think zero-based budgeting should have been done a long time ago. It's actually the way to go. And I'm glad that we're actually doing it the proper way right now. We met last week, both myself, our boards met both, Free Town and Lakeville last week. And there's been some things that have been misspoken about. But until we have a budget from the school department that says we're short this, there's no reason for us to entertain an override until we see what the numbers look like. And so that, I think that's pretty much what we said last week.
That was the consensus of both boards at that meeting. We don't really have, we don't have the materials to work with.
So until you present a budget to us, obviously, we don't know what a shortfall is. So how can we say, oh, we gotta go out there and do an override vote, or even consider it, before we know what the numbers are? So we're waiting to have your numbers come back to us, and I imagine that's gonna be mid-January? Or is it gonna be the 10th of November? I mean, of January?
Stop me, too, you can't have a shortfall, you know, the government was still...
Right, I understand, I understand.
We do expect to have something in January, and then just wait for the governor's numbers to come in to find your answer.
Well, we have to do the same thing. So, we'll only do it on our budget. So we understand the process. We go through it ourselves, the same exercises. But hopefully, the idea behind our board getting together from July to two weeks ago was that we're trying to build awareness that there is an issue. And the ABC scenario was simply just an exercise to say, "Let's look at worst-case scenario, let's look at this scenario, and let's have something in between." And that's so that hopefully, the school committee can take that information and then go out and do some sort of community involvement, where you get together with the communities, invite them public in to see where you are, and where you're at, and the help that you need. I mean, I thought that's what our objective was. Was just really to help the school committee.
I have a question, and bring you to the both members of the board of selectmen. Is it possible that when we go to town meeting, that we can have, on the omnibus budget for the schools, we can actually have the school committee voted number on that budget? Because it always seems we go into town meeting with the number that the school committee hasn't voted. The number's always what the selectmen and the finance committee recommend, and they don't have what the school committee recommendation is, and then we have to come back after and adjust our budget to what the number is.
Yeah, I don't think we can speak to that right now, we don't...
Because if we vote a budget number, then why aren't the taxpayers being made aware of that number that we vote at town meeting and let them do the decision? I know we have to come out of town meeting with a balanced budget.
Right.
And that has the appearance that it could throw it into chaos.
To my knowledge, last year, we got together with Mr. McCarthy and your board, and that's where the number came from, prior to going to town.
There was a lot of discussion before town meeting, so that there wasn't any kind of chaos on the floor. And there was consensus.
Yeah, I thought the number that we voted was the number that we were all agreeing...
It's happened in the past. It has happened.
You know, to your point, Mr. Garrett, I think that it'd be responsibility of the school committee to get it out to the public, what our budget requests are. And as they're being adjusted, for whatever reason, you know, make sure that the public understands why that process is going through, what happens. That would be my comment. Good point. It is important, you know, that the public...
I just wanna make sure that the public knows that...
That that wasn't, you know, often, but always, it's not the number that we start with.
Exactly, and I just wanna know that, I just wanna make sure that the taxpayers in both towns know that, at the end of the day, this is what you're willing to spend on education, this is what you're gonna get for services.
I think we should endeavor to make sure that that message has gotten to the public clearly.
Exactly.
And one more thing. I imagine at some point, we're gonna have that same meeting that we had last year, between both boards, both finance committees, members of both towns, and the school committee members as well, like we did last year.
Absolutely.
Was that the one in Free Town, or was that the Saturday budget?
No, that was at the Council on AID.
That was at the COA, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Davenport?
Another thing that I have to, it would be remiss of me not to bring it up, after having just talked about the towns requesting structural changes that impacted our costs. Another thing that was a consensus view of the FinCom was that we recommend that the school committee allow the superintendent to communicate with the unions about whether or not they would participate in any kind of renegotiation. And again, we don't, the, you know, what we talk about in our meetings is giving every stakeholder an opportunity to be a part of the solution. Where that goes is, you know, not really, it wasn't really the purview of the FinCom, but it came up repeatedly, and it was a consensus view, that we give the superintendent that ability to check with the union whether or not they would entertain anything along those lines. So, I guess what I'm saying is that I'd like to make a motion that we give the superintendent that ability to contact the president of the EFL for that purpose.
Second. Give this a motion, second is a discussion to the motion.
Superintendent, Mr. Gary, we have a discussion with the EFL.
Mr. Pardale?
I don't think you need a motion for that. I think you're scoring all the options, and that's one of them. I don't think there's quite enough pushing to get that point.
Maybe so. I mean, we went through that exercise once about a year ago, and we did vote, if that's really not necessary.
Sounds like darkened down.
My guess.
So, I mean, that's the chase, I guess, then if it doesn't require a vote, according to our superintendent, it has already been done. Is it still in conversation standpoint, or do we have an answer?
I can't speak for Paula, I know that we discussed it.
Okay, all right, so if we don't have an answer, then you're, it's in the process, that's my point, okay.
Okay, that's fine, that's...
All right, that's fine. Would you withdraw your motion?
I'll withdraw my motion, that's fine.
Motion's withdrawn, okay. Okay. It pertains to the FY14 budget and not other questions? Yes?
Paula Money, President of the EFL, I would like to request that if the school committee is requesting that the EFL consider opening the contract, that that be formally requested in writing, please.
Thank you. Right. As soon as to I love, one, Mr. Pardale, you have a question?
Just regarding class sizes, I think it's important that we, once again, have that goal, or set a goal, as to what the size should be, perhaps by grade level. But we did a public request of the school, and Mike Ward supplied that this past week, or the middle of last week. And the class size for the elementary schools was not the 30, from my memory, but was, we'll call it mid-20s. I didn't bring that, because I didn't think that was the conversation. So I think we need to come to that number. We go to Dave Davenport's discussion of, if we wanna go to the town and ask for an override for small class sizes, we need to publish that, and then have somewhat of a policy regarding that. So it's not an easy number to come to. We just can't take 250 teachers, divide by 3,000 students, and say it's, you know, it's one teacher for 12 students. That math doesn't work, and I'm not implying it should. So I think we need that class size. But it was not the 30, I believe, that, if we're talking about current year, it was in the mid-20s, I believe. I did not bring that.
No, we're not talking about, we're talking about projected for FY14.
Okay.
That's FY13.
That's FY13.
Right, right, okay.
Yes, they are in the 20s.
The class size today is, I believe, below 25.
You think they are?
Yeah, but...
Right, we need to make sure that the conversation sticks to the agenda item, which is FY14. I thought you had a question, not a statement, there's a question somewhere in there?
Can I just clarify, in case there was a misunderstanding?
Okay, what your previous comments were, yes.
Yeah, I, the exercise that I ran through was using pre-regionalization class sizes, generally regarding... I'm sorry, I got one of these things in my mouth. In the low 30s. Very, very high 20s at a minimum, right, at our worst, and low 30s in many cases. So, that was one of the major advertised benefits of regionalization. And in fact, we did lower class sizes. So those were the, I was using the couple of years prior to regionalization and current as a comparison. Not like last year in projected position.
Mr. Garrett?
Can we just, I don't think we need a motion, but can we just direct the superintendent, if we take the consensus from the committee, to formally request in writing to the union to open up the contract for the purpose of renegotiation?
Either chair, request it, you can do it on your own.
All right.
Just getting back to that class size, do we know what the class size was before FY, well, actually, FY12, because that would be the higher class size, right?
In the elementary schools?
In the elementary schools. FY11, I'm sorry.
FY11.
FY11.
It was in the mid-30s, in some of the classes in Free Town. I have those numbers at home.
And they're about 22, 23 right now, from what the numbers we got in last week. So, I guess you guys are gonna come up with whatever that number is. It should be.
318.
Right.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, grade one, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, for those grade levels, yeah.
Yep.
Mr. Grayson?
The policy's all great and fine, sounds great. But what happens when we don't get the money to adhere to that policy? It's gonna be a violation of our own policy. You know, we're at a 30 class size right now at bare minimum. What happens when we go to the town and say, "This is all great, we got this policy of 22," and they say, "But I can't give you the money." Then we just violate our own policy, because we're not gonna be able to adhere to that. So I'd be very cautious of putting a, I would, certainly wouldn't mind building a budget based on a number that we agree to, but to put it in a policy, I'd be afraid we'd be revisiting that policy every year in this economic climate. Not that I want that to happen, but to tie our hands that way, with the towns giving us maybe less money, and it's not, I'm not saying it's their fault. I think it's going down the wrong road for me, from a policy perspective.
I guess, stick to the strict definition of policy, sure. Perhaps a consensus or a guideline for a specific goal. Yeah, a goal, Mr. Pardale.
You could have a policy that says, based on your revenue.
You can have a caveat.
You don't have the money there, but you should always strive that way. If there's money there, you can't start at 28. If it says 25, and the money's available, you better go to 25. You can't start allocating someplace else. It's easier to work around a degree of policy to accomplish that.
We know this year is gonna be a very tough economic year for the towns, and as well as the school committee of the schools. So we just need to see what, what I always said back in July, what the real pain is. And if we can get everybody on board and work together with administration, possible unions, and then bring the towns and say, "Okay, these folks have done this, this group has done this, it's our turn to step up to do this." But it's hard to do that if we don't get everybody invested into this process and let everybody know that we have a major throughout this year.
I just, I think in terms of the class sizes, I think I kind of agree that we shouldn't set policy by numbers. But I think we can establish what the optimal class size should be in a learning environment, by grade or school, however the superintendent would suggest that would be done. And I think the goals clearly that we have, that we have some basis of information to start with, that we can kind of build on and grow on, I think, would help us to be able to grow, to bring that a little further along.
Just a quick, besides that, what Mr. Ward alluded to earlier was kind of the creative thought process with the technology about how everything is done. We're not the agrarian society anymore. So I'm hoping that as you engage in these zero-based budgeting discussions, you're also incorporating how methodologies are going to be implemented that provide for efficiencies and greater student success, recognizing that this is probably the nadir year in the economy, but it takes a long time to creep back up. So, you know, I know that we've had that discussion in finance committee meetings, too, hybrid classes, whatever we're talking about. So it goes beyond just class size, is what I'm saying.
You know, to your point, you know, in thinking about this in a more proactive way, and we've been in very reactive mode, I feel like, at least in...
and we've been in very reactive mode, I feel like, at least in the two and a half years that I've been here, you know, looking forward two and three years ahead, I think that we need to think not just about the operational budget the capital needs as well. That has to be taken into account, especially if we're going to leverage the technology infrastructure that, you know, we have seen our towns invest in. That's going to have to be a consideration. I don't know, in this current climate with what we have, how we're going to get around an infusion of revenue. I don't know how we can do it in the next two to three to four years out, and I think that we have to think about that, and it's not just on the school side, it's on the town side as well. And so even if it's not for FY14, you know, we have to face this fiscal cliff, as everyone's talking about, I think we need to start shifting our mode from reactive to proactive and start planning a couple of years ahead, or else we're going to be, and we're just pushing the can down the road, and we've said this before, we're simply pushing the problem to the point where, how painful is it? Like, how much pain can you take to the point where it's just too much? And at that point, you dismantle a ton of work, years of work that our teachers have put in, our administrators have put in, and then you're back to ground zero, and it's really hard to rebuild from that. So I think we need to shift our mindset and really think about what's not just happening and what's moving forward.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Any further discussion on FY14? I guess, Mr. Davenport?
Sustainability was the word we were using in FINCOM to state what Jessica just talked about. Comes from, you know, whether or not we have to request an override from the towns and there's a justification for it, it's also going to have to come from within. If we just manage to scrape by this year, I think Mike's been showing us that it won't be quite as bad next year, but we're probably looking at being at least a million dollars in the hole. I mean, if we just try to barely get to the finish line this time around, we're going to be chasing another million next year. You know, so we're going to be feeling it all over again.
Yes, you have to look at this as a three-year issue because I think the next three years are critical here. It's not just this year, it's the next two years from what we saw from Mike. Mike put some, both the numbers together, of course, and you have, what's that?
Preliminary.
Preliminary. I understand. They're at their soft, but. We have to look at those soft numbers for the future too, because if it does come down to it and we've done everything, cut to the bare bones, so we can cut if we have to go that route, or if we're going to fund this thing properly so that we can all function here, you have to look at it three years out. It can't be just this year because we can't, certainly can't pass an override or go for an override this year and then go back to taxpayers two years from now and say we're another million dollars short. Can't do that. It has to, we have to look at this as a, as I said, sustainability issue for the next three years.
Don, you want a motion to adjourn?
Okay.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from the finance committee.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn the FINCOM. Any discussion?
Absolutely not.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Even vote. Opposed? You are free.
Thank you.
Again, thank you very much for everything that you've done, all the effort that you've put into the exercise that we're in the middle of. So thank you very, very much, and we're going to continue to look to you for the direction as this budget continues to develop. So we appreciate everything you can do.
Fun times.
Mrs. Fox?
Yes, Mr. Ward.
Legal response to whether or not you can reduce transportation reimbursement.
You got it?
It's one of the general counsels, if you want to read it.
I wasn't crazy.
Way to go find a spec.
All right, come on. Come on, guys. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent search update. Oh, you let me take that one, thank you very much, okay. We had eighteen, how many? Nineteen applicants. The superintendent search committee met and elected to interview nine of those, right? Nine of those applicants, and interviews have begun. So we're in the process of interviewing potential candidates to bring before the school committee. Any questions on the superintendent search? Yes, follow that.
Well, nineteen applicants, was there a number that they expected more than that? Or was that about the right number, or what was the preliminary thought?
Well, it varies from committee to committee. There are some committees that have seen, they've gotten 39 applications, 31 applications. We happen to come in at 19. I'm not sure what the other ones are, we're just about to make a look, so I think it varies.
Okay. Any other questions to help the search committee? Okay, moving on to the next agenda later. Water, what? Oh, Dave.
To go back to Dave Potona.
Ready to go?
Ready. You don't, you're on the agenda anyway, so.
No, we jumped it, we jumped it.
We're missing both of our items, keep going. Waste one, we're going to update.
Is it stuck in the pool in Long Beach?
No, it actually has been fabricated.
Oh, okay.
Do they have a timeframe, when they expect it, or they just, could be three days, could be three years?
Last week, they said it was the end of this week. I'm sure this week it's coming.
Sounds like a machine that's just delivering.
So three days or three years.
Okay, so that's the last.
It's like the last piece we leave, and then some inspections, and then we can, we're really hoping it'll all work itself out so that we can actually flush the high school. I don't want to say that correctly, but during the Christmas break, the holiday break, I should say, and that way we can actually test to see how this thing is actually functioning.
Okay.
So timing wise, it's actually good.
Okay, and so also, the question I always ask you is that we've maintained communication with the Lakeport Health and let them know exactly.
She sees me on all those emails going to Lakeport Health.
All right, thank you. Okay, the DDSE accountability visit?
So we talked to you last time, I think, I was thinking, Magera asked us to kind of investigate what types of supports we need. The biggest challenge right now is gathering all of the information for the group that's coming to the visit. And so we've actually been using the temporary executive assistant that has been helping me out in Linn's absence to help gather that information. Linda returned today, so she looks great, has her glow back, and, you know, she really, did really well. She made it through the whole day, so she did really well. So we're wondering, maybe using Amy for some of that to continue to help gather that information. We're also trying to pull out the FTR's evaluation software, which is taking a lot of database input, and maybe having more fun some of those special projects that the committee will be handled to supporting some extra hours.
What's the, what's the cost?
The cost, we do have a retirement to the high school that we're bringing in someone at a lower rate, so we might be able to offset some of that. You know, it's a tight one.
Do we need a motion for that, or?
No.
Okay, sounds great. Keep us posted. Okay, Mr. Clark?
Benefits eligible position?
No. Thank you, keep us posted, please. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Technology.
Technology vote, there's something way back, it's way, way back in the back, if you'd like, I could read it, but it's a matter of formality, that the school committee should vote a motion, voted to avoid. Basically, we went out and we did bond to technology, and it was so moved on, actually, voted to avoid $93,000, we found later the regional school, bond, participation, technology, sold on November 29, 2012, to be dated December 14, 2012, matured December 13, 2013, to Eastern Bank, at a net interest cost of 0.55%. Make that motion.
So move based upon what Mr. Ward just read into the record.
Second.
Motion, second to the discussion.
It's just that you wanted one.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other discussion to the motion? Hearing them, we'll vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those who are opposed, that motion carries now.
And if it's all possible, Mr. Clark, before you leave the stadium, we need some signatures, and we'll be able to actually have funds in the bank by December 14, to begin our project.
When do you want to do that?
Just got some stuff to introduce. Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the custodial RFP discussion. I would like to make a motion to table that until the January, until after the January meeting, until we see what the actual budget looks like, the actual soft budget, preliminary budget, whatever you want to call it. There is a motion on the table to table this agenda, just till the next meeting, after we see what the budget presentation is. Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Right, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion as to tabling the motion? Mr. All there.
Mr. Ward.
No, wait, I don't, point of vote, I don't think there's any discussion on a motion on the table. Oh, you're right, you are right. I'm sorry, sorry. Mr. All there. All those in favor of tabling the agenda item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those who are opposed?
No.
Two no's. Five ayes. This agenda item is to table.
Who was the second?
The second was Mr. Davenport voted in opposition and Mr. All there. Okay. Okay, moving on to new business then, we have a, it's a remote participation for meetings. This was requested by a committee member that is here on the agenda. Remote participation for meetings?
Yes, Mr. Davenport asked the instructor to look into remote participation, and I did so. I looked at it, it's not general law, so the district needs to decide whether or not they want to utilize this as an option for the free town, like the regional school districts. If you do, you can, but you must follow state guidelines. I did put the guideline cheat list in your packet, it's in there in your hard copy, not in your electronic one, but it's right in here, a little cheat sheet. Once you agree to use this as an option, the chair is authorized to permit it, and if a remote participant meets the standard, which there has to be a standard for which you allow remote participation, for example, distance, if the person is away or is far away, you can allow remote participation. If there's an illness or they're sick, you can allow the remote participation, or if there's an emergency, you can allow the remote participation. There has to be some standard by which you designate the reasons for this allowance. So the chair has a discretion also to allow people to participate remotely, but the committee must have a live forum in order to do it, and it must be the majority of the school committee. And the person, a remote person is not counted as a part of the forum.
Oh, okay, right. So you have to live.
So that all the way to the committee has to be the one that decides whether or not we can do it or not do it, but how and when it's used? Because I think the reason this came up was because it was a subgroup, it was like a support group or a task force group, a goals committee.
Yeah.
Just to decide whether or not we could meet in here on occasion, and then also kind of maybe email and send ideas back and forth, and then bring them back to the committee. I think that's the, no?
No, not.
That was what I was thinking.
We can't, we can't conduct a meeting by email.
No, 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 I wasn't suggesting conducting a meeting, just sharing information, not having any discussion about it, just sharing information, so that you can be better prepared for a meeting when you do come together. That's all.
I think the question that was raised, that it was done for a subcommittee, would the policy be meaning for all meetings, would this be an allowance for all meetings?
And I think that comes back to whether the committee decides yes or no.
Yes.
I have some expertise in how this is done. So typically, this is done with a speaker phone or with a Skype session displaying the video that will, when you're displaying the video, both the committee and usually the audience has to see the person on the other end Skyping in or some sort of electronic communications. When it's a phone, it's typically a speaker phone at the table. So I don't even know if we have that capability in the media center here.
We do, I Skyped into a meeting once.
No, 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 but I don't know if we have the capability to have a phone in here that somebody could call in.
Right.
Just put a phone on the table.
Yeah, there's a phone over there, I don't know if they did have to extend over there. We have done remote before.
But you typically got to have a monitor so that way the public can see the person. Yeah? Mr. Davenport?
The main reason I put the idea out there wasn't so much for the general use, you know, all over the place in all of our meetings, but, I mean, we have a lot of three-person subcommittees, and we do have, I have some difficulty trying to sustain meetings, and I thought it might be easier because we have a lot of obligation, we have these meetings, people belong to other committees and meetings, that occasionally we might be able to make that forum if we did have remote participation as an option, whereas on these smaller subcommittee bits, we tend to have a difficult time getting a date set and then everybody being able to make it and all that. That's really what it's.
Remote participation not satisfying the forum, it kind of ticks.
Well, yeah, well, if you have a three-person committee, you have to have two people here.
Right.
You know, so if there's one person that's got a hardship, but they would be able to dial in.
What I thought you just said is that you were hoping that being able to have people remote, participate remotely.
Not in total, yeah, we'd have to go by the guidelines.
Facilitate.
That's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, you have to be able to hold the meeting because then you would have a forum to include the person who's remotely participating.
See, I just look at it as a compliment to having meetings, that while you're working outside the meetings that you do are able to organize and have, that you would have this compliment of being able to at least be gathering and developing information and just setting it along to work with the point of contact on the task force.
Well, information can be disseminated electronically. It's when you start to engage in dialogue, that can lead to consensus.
It doesn't need to be any discussion. It's about, you know, if you're left off at a particular meeting with, you know, certain things that you've agreed that you're going to do before the next meeting, then why not just develop those? Everybody gets the same information, you don't talk about it, you just come together in the next meeting, but it helps to, it's like having an agenda before the meeting. It just helps to have that information, since you have a better, more rich discussion when you come together, that's all.
Oh, yeah, like doing your homework.
That's what I was.
It's like we have to do our homework.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I wonder if that would be helpful, I don't know if that would be helpful. I mean, unless you were really kind of short like that night, but.
Right, but yeah, you would have helped us with what we were hoping for, I think.
But that night, if I'd been able to call in, then we would have had a forum.
No, we wouldn't.
No?
No, you have to have a forum.
Oh, you have to have a forum present, okay.
So that wouldn't help us, and I think that was one of the things that we were hoping would.
I don't know if that would benefit this, but not for.
If you had like a real important discussion or something, you know what I mean, that you had to, like, let's say you were at a seven, for your job.
I was away.
Yes, and we had a real important discussion about canceling something. And you want to be able to participate and be allowed. So I'll make a motion that we'd be allowed to be able to do that at the discretion of the chair.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second, to allow remote participation at the discretion of the chair. Is that basically what we want to do, or we need to have that? We need to vote.
We do need to vote.
Okay. All right, so it's a motion and a second, is there any discussion to the motion?
Just to, yes, okay. We do need to vote to start it, but it's at the discretion of the chair to allow a person to utilize.
Okay. Any other discussion? You can't call in from spin class and say, hey, no. Should be reasonable, we should, we should consider direction. Any other discussion to the motion? Hearing them, we'll vote, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Hearing none, move to all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. And all those who are opposed?
No.
That motion passes by majority. Right? Next item on the agenda on the new business is request to designate items as surplus, Mr. Toto?
There's a series of science textbooks that were found in the basements on it. The books are out of date, they are irreparable. We've tried contacting a number of textbook companies, see if we can sell them, and too out of date, the two are terrible, thus we'd like to declare it a surplus and dispose.
Move, second. Motion and a second to approve any discussion. Hearing none, move to all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those who are opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Going back to presenting your presentations to the committee, Secretary Principals' report. Uh, Mr. Toto?
Given the times that we are at, I believe my report stands on its own, but I invite you to please look at the data from the discipline and tardy results from this first term, the last year's first term. A lot of that is due to the policies you allowed us to change in the student handbook. If you look closely at them, you're going to see dramatic differences in numbers. We're very proud of them, students have been outstanding this year across the board. Smoking has almost disappeared at the high school, I can't say it's going to go away forever, but to me, it's, it's not even an issue. Maybe three, four kids, I got to keep my eye on and track them around, and that's about it, but they've been outstanding. And the only reason that it's being outstanding is because kids are choosing not to smoke, you know, it's not necessary, because I'm there to change policy, they just got their heads on it, they're going to not smoke, that's what, you know, policy, rules, and punishments, they don't really get rid of smoking, students have to choose not to smoke, so that's basically what they've done.
Quick question for you, Dave, on the information as far as incidents of, or, you know, party hits or suspensions and whatnot, last year we had fifty-two days out of school suspension, we didn't have the ability to do in school suspension, if we look at this year, we actually have fifty-five when you add both, is that driven by there are some students who wouldn't even have gone suspended, they would have been in school, in classes still that are now doing in-school, or do you think?
From last year?
From this year, because you didn't have in-school suspension, they were, it wasn't until. So I mean, I think Sonicwood didn't have in-school suspension, so the numbers total are a little bit higher, but for argument's sake, they're, they're the same.
They're kind of actually kind of around the same areas, it's higher given the number of incidents itself, but it might be the tenacity that we take on incidents as well, you know, we, I'm very.
You hold more kids accountable than they probably were.
And we like, we see in-school suspension as a learning tool, I, you know, that's, to me, that's not even a negative thing, because we get so much more out of that when it's run correctly, so we find that as a benefit. And I try to do in-school suspensions all the time, unless it's so dramatic, that we do have to do all the time in school and stuff. And if you notice, a lot of those discipline referrals are associated with the AO period, about one-third of them, and we've just put some things in place to tighten up, AO, this just run not as well as it could have been, and we're going to look at that very closely for next year, I will put that into play, but overall, kids have been outstanding, teachers have been very supportive, let's say thanks. And the tardiness, and look at the tardiness, I mean, last year, a hundred and nineteen kids at the point were four or more tardies, because that's what the policy was, you had four tardies per, so tardies per term, I give you two tardies for the year, we only had twenty-three kids with one or two tardies, and again, that was choices kids made, choices to get to school on time, but it was the help because of what you allowed them to change in the handbook.
Mrs. Gold, do you have a question?
Just, I attended Harvey this weekend, and excellent job to all the, all the Sonicwood students, it always amazes me, just the memorization skills, and, and we really have some talented, talented students here, so great job, and looking forward to the musical.
Xavier Rogers.
Yeah, and Saracudo.
Xavier's actually going out and had surgery for a few weeks, so he was like, oh my God, he's going to play the role.
Absolutely, absolutely, and I know that's going to help him get, get healthy all that much quicker, knowing that the musical's coming up, so I'm looking forward to it.
Mr. Grayson, you have a question?
Uh, Dave, you emphasized a lot on the choices the kids have made, I, I want to, you know, say thanks, because I think that's choices help in the environment they're in, so I think you, you know, you've embraced a positive culture, I've always liked that about you, so I think the choices they make reflect in the environment they're in, so thanks.
Thanks, it's a lot about connections, you know, unfortunately, my two assistant principals are very student-focused, and they've made connections with kids, so if you could, not, you know, it's as personal as you can get, you know, we treat them like they're our kids, they, it's not so much they want to break the rules, they don't want to disappoint us, that's what they think about more than anything, and it's because of the relationships you build, the connections you have. I was fortunate, because ninety percent of those kids I had for three years at the middle school, you don't always walk into something like that, but my two assistant principals are outstanding at that, and working so closely with the staff, it's been great, but it's a great group of kids, looking awesome, really happy, thank you.
Yes, Mr. Ward?
I'm leaving, in this building, I'm not listening to anybody, I have never seen these bathrooms this clean and this smooth, great as I have seen in the last ten years I've been there a while.
It's true, I, I, last year I would walk by that bathroom, and it'd be smoke all the time, I had to smell it one time, and every time I walked in there, like.
It was such an issue the last year I was here, I'm just, I don't think we give self enough credit for that one.
Yeah, that's true. Kids may be through shows, man.
Thank you very much, Mr. Toto.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and that will dispense with new business. Oh no, I'm sorry, that's, that was part of presentations to the committee, so the next, next part of our agenda here is the directors' reports, so who would like to go first, usually it's on here, but who wants to?
Rock, paper, scissors.
Actually, the area, I think most, I'd report, we're actually talking about this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Ward.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Just looking at, I'm telling us a lot of treatment, we have it in contact with Middle Grove Gas, and we did sort of numbers on that, I'm sure Reese is going to say something about CIC, uh, it's still out, we're constantly responding, they ask who wants to lease, know about us meeting in the tent, yeah?
Mr. Grayson?
Where do we stand with the whole solar?
That's what I was referring to, uh, Middle Grove Gas and GeoGenics, about two weeks ago, finally got together with, they had the people that would run the numbers, I called last week and they were still doing, but it's almost like a situation where it's almost it's going to work with Middle Grove Gas, and they felt fairly confident, they were actually brought on a limb and going further than that, they felt fairly confident something could be worked out, and I left it at that, so I probably won't make any more stand.
If, if you need any resource, I, I had an opportunity to meet with a consultant over the past week, and asked him if he would, you know, eyeball anything for, for me, and he'd be willing to look at that for you, you know, just to kind of.
Welcome, welcome. We also had another, another one through, um, one of our employees' relatives, so to speak, who actually had done the same thing, was offering for some assistance, but I was glad that they could, let me see what happened.
I, I'm talking about estimated savings, you know, that kind of thing, I, I think it'd be nice to get a round idea of what that's worth.
Any other questions for Mr. Ward? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ward. Okay. And so, you go to, when we break down the roadmap now? All right, so we have an update from the office, Rachel and Grant.
Okay, curricular issues first, from my office comes with family literacy night, we have started meeting as a committee this year, last year was our first family literacy night, um, it went beyond our expectations last year, and so we actually have to move our venue this year, so in cooperation with Bob Souza, he has suggested that we move it to the Free Town Middle School, it offers a lot more space, we want people to be able to move out freely and safely in the building, and so the spaces are spread out more, and it also provides a lot more harmony. We've also decided to move the night to March, we were very nervous and really sweated out last year because it was in January and there was some snowy weather, so we decided to move it to March, we will firm up the date this week, we need to work around some benchmarking and some, the end caps, so we will come up with a definitive date this week, and we will be at Tri's National. Uh, the next item, DSAP, the District and School Assistance Center, Professional Development, they have put out a series of programs and offerings for teachers that will be provided free of cost, they will be supported by the grant that we have, so teachers will be getting some information about some courses they can participate in, for PVPs for recertification, but also some of them offer course credit, and so they can go in for a tuition reimbursement and, and build up their course credits as well. CPR and first aid, we are going to be offering all employees in the district CPR, and they can add first aid training if they would like, that's going to be in January, we're trying to get some dates together, we're going to have a couple of sites where that's going to be taking place, because we have already, within a week, we had over forty staff members express interest in that, and so we're going to have a couple of different times available because of when the schools get out at different times, and also we really want to encourage the coaches to participate, and many of them are involved in activities right after school, so we'll, we'll have various times and dates for them to be able to enroll in that. That's not a cost to the district, they are, we are just coordinating it and offering it, and participants get it on session fees. Rubicon Atlas Update, that is the curriculum system, we have, I have uploaded all of the files that have been completed already, Rubicon has agreed to do the initial upload for us since we had already had so much of our curriculum work done that we've got, started on last summer, so they'll do the initial upload, I've sent everything to them, and they request two to three weeks to have that following, so it's already been part of that time, hopefully they will take a full three weeks, but as soon as that's finished, we're going to have a training session for the curriculum leaders, it's already set for January, they will be able to see all of our work up there, be able to ask questions specifically about the work that they've done, they'll also be able to look at some of the data analysis tools that Rubicon offers that are really, really some phenomenal tools for them to use in everything at curriculum. Once the teacher, uh, once that happens, then the teachers will be able to access it, they start with approximately fifty percent of the staff, next year will be seventy-five percent of the staff, in the third year is a hundred percent of the staff, they generally graduate it that way, and so this year, because we will mandate it to have the math and ELA curriculum done, we will have the math and ELA teachers on first, but that doesn't mean all of the elementary teachers, because they all teach math and ELA, so we'll add, go up to seventy-five percent next year, and then one hundred percent the year after. All of the curriculum leaders though, in every content area, and all of the administrators all have accounts, and so they will be curriculum loaded in every content area, so that when the teachers, so that the teachers can access it through the curriculum leader now, but then when we add them to the system, they'll be able to access it on their own, so all content areas will be using it and including their units as they're developing them.
Can I just make one, the, the great thing about this is that parents, once this is uploaded, parents are going to be able to see all of the stage one units and the sequence throughout the year, right off of our website, so they'll be able to go in, be on the fourth grade, they'll be able to see term one, unit one, what are the standards, what are the learning objectives, what are the inherent understandings and essential questions, the big ideas that the kids are focusing on for whatever six, eight-week period or however long the unit is, many parents have asked, you know, what, what is my child covering, at what point in the year, and how can I help them at home, so they're going to be able to go in and know exactly what the kids are working on, so that's going to be great for parents.
And the curriculum leaders will be maintaining that, so as we develop units, they'll be putting it up right away, it's just the initial upload from the vendor, that takes two to three weeks, after that, the curriculum leaders will be doing it actually in real time, when they're at a curriculum writing session, they'll be uploading that information right away, and so parents will be able to get that literally as soon as it's completed. We did, uh, parent portal training, as we know, we are going to be piloting parent portal access to Edline, and so Carol Hilton and Craig Mathmer at the Moynihan District, they are having several meetings with staff in order to help them to know how to maneuver the system, and what needs to be done in order to have this information available for parents. The administrative staff is actually going to be trained tomorrow morning, and so everyone will be done really in a short amount of time, a short amount of time to, in preparation for that coming in January.
I just want to make a point, this is a pilot that we went through with the EATF for upgrades four through twelve, and it is for progress reports and report cards, so I just wanted to make sure that I clarified that.
We, Dr. Heisenberg and myself, we had a, a meeting at the request of a parent group, they are affiliated with the Race to Nowhere organization, it was a wonderful meeting, they, we had conversations about some items that were of concern to them, including homework policies and standardized testing, we have already spoken to the principals, and they have already started conversations with their teachers about grading policies, and so that was very quick turnaround on that, and they will be, we'll tell you that to us, actually we have a meeting tomorrow, we'll be discussing that and getting an update on how that went. They have, the group has offered to have a screening of the film, Race to Nowhere locally, and Dr. Heisenberg has agreed to meet with them and create a forum discussion around it, so that we can initiate and participate in that discussion with them, so maybe that may be a good one.
So right now, what they're looking to do is get the license in order to do a large group showing, and we would do like what many other communities have done, is do that screening, probably here at Conflit in the auditorium, and then have a panel discussion around it, to get some dialogue going around the community regarding some of the concerns around stress and, you know, workloads and, and things like that, that, you know, this group has raised, so we're looking forward to continuing the dialogue around these topics.
We have some Department of Education trainings at Bridgewater State University that our curriculum leaders will be participating in, in January, first is the implementation of the mathematics frameworks, we have all five of our mathematics curriculum leaders will be attending that, that would be extremely useful, because they will actually be involved in some breakout sessions where they will be talking to colleagues around the state and GDSU representatives, and it will be focused on their particular grade levels, so they'll have a K through two, a three through five, a six through eight, and a nine through twelve sessions that the teachers will be participating in, will come back to brief and see how we are doing with our curriculum and how we've been implementing our curriculum and aligning to the curriculum frameworks. And there is a similar one for the science teachers, the two, the science curriculum leaders will be attending for the next generation science standards, which are scheduled to be released next year, so in preparation for that, they'll be participating in that discussion. We have a lot of curriculum writing going on, we're actually not only on target, but we're actually getting a little head, ahead of target in how much curriculum writing we've been doing, math and ELA has of course been continuing their work with the curriculum writing, but we've also added curriculum writing for health and physical and wellness, and also for the arts, music and art, so that we can get them together, K through twelve, which is something that they really have not done in the past, and they can align their curriculum, come up with exit standards for the grade levels, and work together to start writing their curriculum for each of the schools, to make sure that they are aligned and having conversations together. The nurses are also involved in getting together to create a crisis, crisis plan for the entire district, and looking at other policies and procedures and making sure that they are consistent across the district. Skipping CIC for a second, the Race to the Top Grant, I will be submitting an amendment for that, which will allow us, that is just going back to the DSAP, professional development opportunities for teachers, I'm going to be submitting an amendment so that we can get that, those funds to provide that professional development for them, we're already halfway through the Race to the Top, ends in FY fourteen, and so far, we've already completed a little over fifty percent of our intended goals, and the rest are all on target, and we're very close to finishing that, so we're doing extremely well with our Race to the Top initiatives. And finally, the CIC grant that has been submitted, we did submit it early, and so we were not able to hear about how many other, how many other applicants there were, or what that is going to entail, we don't find out if we're granting until January on that. But the grant, I'm really excited about it, it's gotten a lot of support from Representative Oral and also from Representative Rogers, who wrote a letter of support on behalf of the grant, the grant does involve. Uh, the grant does involve, it's an extension of course to the grant that was written last year, which was really to, um, to take full advantage of regionalization and to create consistency across the schools. And so, uh, I looked at a lot of the initiatives that we had in place and we tried to see how K through five, we could really make that consistent so that all the children were getting the same experience, that we're really maximizing on our RTI, Response to Intervention Services. And so, uh, I also wanted to make sure that we were taking full advantage of technology that the towns have invested in. And so, a large part of that has to do with technology. Uh, we have submitted, um, a large part of the grant for the purchase of iPads so that students could participate in the Lexia program, uh, Lexia licenses, also, um, in focus projectors and iPads as class sets for small group activities, but also for the utilization of the classrooms that a lot of the teachers haven't participated in. And also, in there is a request for a math program to parallel the success that we've had with the literacy program, um, just to, uh, investigate and look at, uh, math program. We're gonna be putting together a community of teachers to look at it much in the same way as we did the literacy program, to look for a math program that, um, will further align what's happening in, uh, the three schools K through five.
Thank you very much for that report. Appreciate it. Thanks. It's tough to get questions off, but that was very, very thorough. You know? Thank you very much. Okay, and, uh, then, uh, this is St. Pierre.
Just to briefly highlight some of the, um, activities that have been happening in special education, um, the first progress report, um, based upon the current action plan for English language learners was just recently submitted, um, and the second progress report, um, of activities that we're doing to improve our instruction for ELL students and put protocols and policies consistently, consistently in place for the submitted February, with the final one being due in May. Um, we have quite a few indicators that I've shared with you before that we're continuing to work on in special education. Um, two trainings are taking place tomorrow to actually help us to get, um, organized and find our exact criteria, our personality indicators, particularly the ones in parent survey, and also the transitional practices for children, um, exiting early intervention and being qualified for services in special education. Um, no changes in our district enrollment from last month, that has remained the same. Um, professional development, um, we're still trying to find a date for work for all of us to reschedule my third part of my training series, um, which is focusing on the use of RTI data as part of eligibility criteria for specific learning disabilities. So, um, I think we finally found a date today, um, so we'll be ready for the holidays and we'll get that to you in the morning. Early childhood, um, both programs that, um, we've been able to put in place through, um, Pace out of New Bedford, um, the parent and music program, um, for children that's been working at ASLAM City, that's a tremendous success. Um, the program has asked if we could run another series of sessions, and so, we're looking to do that in January. And the Play and Learn Together Program that we put in place at Free Town Elementary has been a fabulous success. Uh, again, the parents, um, had, and has grown from two, two toddlers, when it first opened in September, we're up to almost ten toddlers, um, so it's an incredible program. A lot of great, um, parent to child, um, collaboration and working together on activities and learning music movement. And the language development has been absolutely phenomenal. So, they've also asked to, um, look at maybe bringing that program back and expanding it. Um, we'll do that in January throughout to examine more opportunities. Uh, English language learners, um, what we've done as far as professional development and on that, um, is we have a new assessment tool called the Access Tool, which is replacing the MECO exam in January and February. And what we've done is that we've designated each of the buildings, even if that building does not have any children currently designated, that means the children are others, to become a proficient team of people that will be able to give particular new assessment tools over coming up. So, um, there is a training modular that, uh, those folks that are volunteered to be the representatives from their buildings, two from each of the buildings across the district, um, are participating in, um, we'll complete modules, um, by early January in time for the assessments to begin, um, late January, early February. We haven't did any of that yet. So, that's very exciting to me, really, also. Um, what's really nice about this assessment, um, the new access assessment, it's listening, speaking, reading and writing, and it also covers content area subjects, so it's really a much harder, uh, intensive evaluation, which we excel in. And then newest pieces of information that I have for you is as promised, um, first quarter we put, um, McKenna students, um, we, this, since July, since it started this fiscal year up until, um, finalized my report, um, for today's meeting, um, we've had thirty-two students, um, that have fallen into the category of McKenna students. Of those thirty-two students, none of them are the students that have opted to enroll in our school district, um, they've all opted to, um, go back to their school of origin. Um, and I've also given you the current, current expenditures paid to date, um, for McKenna, uh, breakdown of where these school of origins are located for those children Any questions? I should add, English language learners. What we can do.
Staff?
Am I looking at the, um, Race Collaborative possibly renting space and I have a few questions on that. What is renting in practice?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
What, I mean, um, what does renting in books mean?
Uh, because they haven't finalized yet, but still, we're still looking at the contract. Um, they would be, we'd be renting out a classroom to them so that they could build a program, um, eventually in the future to meet the needs of our students that are falling into the deaf and hard of hearing category as well as other collaborative communities that need this type of program. Um, there were no other districts, member districts in the collaborative that have the space. And I know we're in a situation, we have space and we're also looking for any additional revenue, so it's a win for both parts.
Okay, and, um, naturally, we have a lot of space at Free Town right now since it's a very large building and we've got, you know, um, we're trying to bring each of our homeowners, but we have been talking a lot about the future of ASLAM City. It's a, it's a question, whether or not it gets settled this year, next year, or never, I don't know. But if, um, if we've looked at other possibilities and possibly not closing ASLAM City, but changing student populations to perhaps creating a mixed use situation or trying to do something differently with ASLAM City, would Reed's be interested in having a program there? Or is Reed particularly interested in Free Town, Free Town location for certain reasons?
The reason they're interested in the Free Town location and again, it's all what we're doing in the moment in time and these kinds of.
You should, you have a question.
Is because it is an early childhood program and that is right now partly we have our preschool programs located. Um, we currently, um, we're collecting data from, um, families in the communities that have incoming preschoolers and we're looking at what options they'd be looking for. Um, it's one of the things that, um, we currently do is that right now Free Town houses both Lakeville and Free Town preschoolers. At one time, Free Town had its own park, had a program, and Lakeville had a program in ASLAM City. And when ASLAM City ran out of room and Free Town had room, we brought everybody together. There may be, um, because our programs are growing, it may be something that down in the future that we split in that there's some classrooms in Free Town and classrooms in Lakeville that serve as both the preschool children. Um, one of the challenges that we do find by having all of the children at Free Town is that for some of the families, the distance coming from the outer front of Lakeville all the way over to Free Town prevent them from, you know, taking advantage of our programs. So, these are some ideas that we're tossing around. We've done a survey, we're still collecting information and we'll be, you know, going over that, um, probably later on this month, early January at the latest, and share with you what the findings are from the community, what their wishes are in regards to how we operate preschool programming. So, right now, the, um, the reason that they'll look at Free Town is because that's where preschool is and these children that they're bringing in, um, to, um, put in this particular program need to have access to regular peer models.
It's great. Um, I don't have the lease agreement in front of me yet.
It hasn't.
But, not that lease agreement, the lease agreement for the town.
Oh, okay.
What does dictate for the rent that's coming? Where does that rent money go? No, we're, we're, in our lease agreement with the towns, we, we're, we're able to sublease that building. Are we, that revenue coming to the schools? It's a preschool revolving account, so I was. For Reed's?
Um, I'd have to, I'd have to, I'd have to do some research on that.
I, I just wanna know.
Yeah, we rented, we rented, um, space to Reed's before. I would have to double check where that funding came into.
Well, we didn't lease the building to the town, so it's a whole different problem. Yeah, is the money, if I may, yes. If I'm understanding correctly, you're asking is the money coming to us at the town?
That's correct. Any lease that we do in that space, that's what I wanna know, how that lease clarifies that money. I mean, I think I need to know that because I think we want that, uh, at all possible to be used as, we've been asked by the towns to find revenue sources, we may have additional rent. I wanna know that that rent's coming into the school budget.
Is it, can we, is another one of these remotes, you think?
It, it should, but I understand that as a point.
Right.
Has to be clarified in the lease agreement.
And I do know that I don't know.
I don't have it in front of me, it may be. On me, I'm.
Mr. Oliver?
If, at this point, if we reference, we don't have the lease agreement, we have to leave the bed around, uh, better part of eighteen months now. So, short of, but, short of that, or at least the conversation, and short of that document being signed and briefed by both parties, if it's spelled out in that document, so from now until that, it's the individual towns' policy to approve it and move it that way. We don't have it, we don't have it, we don't have it at this point because we don't have a signed case if there are, and we, we don't even have the ability to sublet it unless we have a signed case. Now, they may tell us, fine, go ahead, we don't have a legal standard, another reason, but.
My point is we need clarification on that.
Yes.
Sign the legal.
This is an idea, I mean, this is a really, you know, incredible investment for us to be partnering with the collaborative to do something like this. One of the things that I could do, if you think, if it'll make it easier, is rather than have that funding come in as rental money, look at it as a credit towards a tuition, if that would make it so that, you know, we're providing enough space and we're even the benefits of allowing to use the space. If that would be a way that would, in writing the document, would help us to clear the situation.
I, I'm sorry. This is in legal stuff? Is that, are legal, people still reviewing this, please?
Yes.
My point is, um, I would make a recommendation to the committee that my recommendation would be that legal reviews this and puts that in the lease agreement and make sure that that rental revenue is, is schools entitled to that revenue. And I don't know if we can be, you know, that's another legal issue, but that's my point. We, we may not be entitled to that revenue. Right, we'll, we'll find out when else, and we'll report back to the committee that. Because I don't have the answer for that. I don't, but I know this, yeah. Should it be spelled out in the lease agreement?
It also is a cost avoidance for us because we didn't have this program in town, we didn't have it, have it in place for our children to go to that program, we'd be in there someplace else. And a much higher cost. Correct. Didn't have preschool. So, it's a double thing. We're already saving money by having them here and now we're saying that whatever money we can generate by allowing others to kind of use these services would be beneficial. So, whether or not we get the money, the town gets the money, is still revenue or revenue generation created by, well, something we put together.
Yeah, but, I, I, in, in the spirit of cooperation and in the spirit of doing what everybody's asked us, our, our, raising revenue was that part. I don't wanna be tied by, my hands tied by, we did a good job of raising the revenue and then the revenue went out.
I don't disagree with, I think you've already said, all I'm saying is that either way, however it works out, it's still a win for us and it's information we can bring back to the towns to say, you asked us to do this and this is what we did. Whether it's, whether it ends up in the lease agreement or not, I think it should be in the lease agreement, there should be some mechanism with the language. However, I know that one of the communities that they do rent space, um, it's pretty about a rate of another regional, this way, it may be, you know, helpful to look at, they, the language they put into that lease agreement because they're being in a situation where they're stressed.
I think a lot of answers could go from our council office, so we'll make sure that we get that and we'll give that to the committee with that information. Okay, any other questions for, uh, Mrs. St. Pierre?
Thank you very much for your. Um, next item of the agenda is a meeting recap. So, fortunately, we invite members of the community to, uh, address the committee with anything that came up as an agenda item, um, in the season's meeting. Is there anyone? Okay, so, now, we'll move on to the next item, the other business that we've brought from the board committee. I do have, uh, a couple of brief items. As I'm sure, uh, many of you are aware, um, we received, uh, Dr. Heisman at the end, myself as chair, the committee received a, a, a letter from Ann St. Pierre, Director's, uh, Student Services, that informed us of her intent to retire, um, effective June thirtieth to, uh, twenty thirteen. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, we have to accept this letter of retirement? Yeah, that's kind of a tough one. Yeah, we say, what do we say? No, you can't retire, you gotta work here for an hour, you know? I mean, is, uh, you know, certainly, um, you know, we were able to have a conversation and I, I'd say, you know, give me a reason to talk you out of this. So, we're certainly very respectful of the job to do and I would invite, uh, anyone else who's a public on this, we'll just. I'll make the motion that we accept this with great regret, which are congratulations and best of luck on her future endeavors and thank her for many, it's a great service.
I'll, I'll second that because, you know, you can always, or whatever. Or retire. I've retired.
I've also been around one, I'm sure, but we actually found out it was a great work. It's been, it's been a month for seven years. I've been doing this fourteen times, seven in Berkeley, seven here. Um, it's been a great, great community we work for, um, particularly with emerging world communities and the excitement of being able to build things consistently across world buildings, I mean, all the buildings. Um, but it's time to do something a little different, um, it's time to move on and expose some other avenues we've got to us. But, um, I've appreciated working here, I've appreciated it so much. When I first came here, I remember my interview, one of the things that I really wanted to be able to do, um, which I didn't have done in Berkeley and we have grown to a capacity, was the opportunity to bring building programs for you. And, um, I think that particularly for our children on the spectrum and our globally delayed children, um, that has been very successful, that, but with the support of every school committee member that I've got, we plead my case about let's try this, let's do this. Um, those programs have saved you an important amount of money because those children are here. We're not spending ten thousand dollars on transportation to send them away out of this group. Um, and, um, we've been able to build the capacity of our special education staff, which is new and bright and energetic, um, people to augment, be, um, you know, very committed, very dedicated, so, um, we do. So, I want to thank all of you for all of your supports, um, and it's been a great, great team, both communities to work for, and ready to ministry team, as well as, um, wonderful staff, parents. That's, the kids and the parents are gonna be the hardest, but it's time to do something. Big thanks. Now, we go.
Mr. Grayson? Um, thanks for looking in. Um, one thing we've talked about in the past, um, with anybody who's under the point here or gets a point by the school committee, um, it was brought up during the superintendent search, was that, um, we conduct exit interviews, um, in that process. One thing we, we never did with superintendents is had exit interviews, and I would recommend that we, we start a policy, that we conduct an exit interview, whether it's a retirement, whether it's a resignation for any individual that's under the purview of the school committee. Maybe we can do that discussion in just a minute? If we can act on the motion that's on the floor, which is to accept, uh, this, uh, this letter of retirement with regret and congratulations. Is there any discussion to, to that motion? Is there any discussion here and then we'll, oh, all those in favor of the acceptance of this, uh, letter of retirement, we signify by saying hi.
Aye.
All those who are opposed? The motion carries again, just want to say, with regret and our congratulations. And I'm gonna hound you till you, till I see your, all of your eyes and try to disgrace us, we'll see what we can do about that. Okay, so, uh, thank you so much for that. Um, getting, getting back to, uh, to, uh, Mr. Grayson. Getting, getting back to what Mr. Gracie's point perhaps is a second item. He did bring up a request that this appear on, on the agenda. And I thought that we'd be able to act on it quickly under business that we properly work, cover, and make. Again, to what Mr. Gracie has said, evidently there had been discussion at the committee level of conducting some, some things, interviews. And we did, we'd say that in the absence of policy, that's probably the most appropriate question to begin. So we should charge our policy subcommittee to take the issue and. All of them on that. So this is an off-line discussion that that's, I just didn't around that. Mr. Oliver.
I just had a question, a curiosity, I guess, from the, on our page. Obviously, the school committee has the directorial authority over superintendent and assistant superintendent and senior director of business, but I know that's not a, I don't know if I qualify to get this. Do we, do we need to have, I mean, should we have directorial authority over physicians if we decide to go forward with policy committee, also sort of policy? Let's make sure that's something else to discuss. And we stop performing exit interviews with other physicians in the administration, whether it's principal or advanced physician? Do we even have the ability to do that? Or if we're working right now, we can stop doing exit interviews, which is the best way.
I, I don't see what, anything we could do with that. Now, again, we discussed the appropriateness of that. And so that discussion would probably take place at the subcommittee level. You know, I, I have done some looking into this and it's, it's big, especially the Director of Student Services, Director of Special Education. We do have jurisdiction over her contract, we intend to do the hiring of that position. And so then it could be, you know, it could be drawn in relation to that we do in fact. I was looking for it, and if we were deciding, you know, what positions would be most appropriate and provide the school committee, the argument we made that the director of special education is. But again.
Again, I don't want to place stuff for policy committee.
Right.
Absolutely.
Should the policy should be a fraction? Mr. Gracie.
Again, the policy subcommittee, we, we appoint that position, we don't appoint the teachers. They're hired by.
But nothing, I think the point was is nothing would include the school committee if it so chose to conduct an exit interview with anyone who works for the school department. Now, again, the appropriateness of that would have to be, you know, something that I think is required by the subcommittee.
Are you provide an avenue for an exit tool to be used in, in a, against the.
So we will, we will refer that to also some committee for their review and for them to report back to, to go back to the committee with their findings. I have, does anything else business to participate in? We do, we need to, it's like a re-visit session. The motion in seconds will pop up.